Vandy Creek here.
Garrigan here.
Mater here.
Visca-Chill here.
Anne Lannon here, and Mr. Bronson is excused, he is sick. We have a quorum, could we please stand up and pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next will be, we have two board members that are being sworn in tonight as they won their elections, that would be myself and Michelle. We will stand up and read our votes.
I, Jay Van Lannon, having been elected to the office of Ashwabhanan School Board, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the said office to the best of my ability to help be God.
Okay, I need a motion to adapt the agenda.
I would like to actually make a motion to move action item one immediately before discussion item L.
We'll get a second on that.
Do you see what that is?
That would be the dance team, we're gonna allow them to not have to sit through four hours of meeting tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, election of officers and appointments committee responsibility assignments. I will turn this over to Brian.
Okay, so we're at the annual time of the year where we nominate offices. And I'm gonna open the floor right now, are there any nominations for the office of president?
I'd like to nominate Jay Van Lannon.
I would second that.
We have a nomination by, Brian seconded by Jenny for Jay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, I'll turn the gamble back over to Jay.
Okay. Next would be a vice president, are there any nominations for vice president?
I would move to continue with Brian Vandy Creek as vice president.
Do we have a second on that?
No, second then.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, we have any other nominations for vice president? Okay, here none, all in favor of Brian Vandy Creek as vice president? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, for the office of clerk, do we have any nominations for the office of clerk?
I know Paul would happily give it up. So if anybody would like to...
It's not a real difficult thing.
No.
I mean, I don't care, you don't.
You want to, alright, I will nominate Jenny Visca-Chill for the clerk, and Paul will owe me a lot of money.
Do we need a second, Michelle?
I second that.
Okay. And no other nominations? Okay, then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And then treasurer, do we have any nominations for treasurer?
I would like to nominate Michelle Garrigan.
I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second, any other nominations from Paul? No. All in favor? Aye. And then that would leave Paul as our at-large member. Okay, next appointment would be Ashwabhanan graduation, which is Sunday, June 3rd, 2018, 1:30. I would, I have some people I'd really like to be there for it. And we have one other person, is there anybody else that'd like to be, to go?
Would you like to be there as a board member, or are you going as a...
I'd like to be as a board member.
Then go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay.
For Jenny and Michelle?
Eighth grade graduation, which is Wednesday, June 6th at 6:30. Anybody that can go to that?
I can, my concern is I can't make the ones that are during the day, so I could do the eighth grade at Parkview.
Mike, did you wanna go too, June 6th?
Yeah, I would like to do that one. I don't experience graduating.
The fifth grade graduation at Valley View is Friday, June 1st at 1:30.
I would like to be at that one, but I have to find out if I'm...
Teaching?
Yeah. So I just have to figure out my schedule.
And I can be, I can be a backup for that if you can't be there.
If I can, okay.
And then Pioneer, May 31st at 6 o'clock.
I can, if others would like to.
Or do we nominate Paul?
We should nominate Paul.
Paul down on him.
He'll never be sick again.
Hopefully he's watching.
Yeah.
Okay, then next then would be the Wasby Convention, which is January 23rd through 25th. I know you two guys went last year, I don't know what your thoughts are, would you wanna go again?
I would go again, I mean, I enjoyed it. So did I. Unless there's other people that...
You'll have a fun person to attend with.
Absolutely.
I know.
Exactly. And then last is our CISA VII meeting. We need to nominate somebody even though it's the same night as our next school board meeting, but...
They would basically be a representative for CISA VII if they ever did anything beyond this meeting. They would be represented.
I'd like to nominate Paul.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I did it last year and it wasn't.
Okay, the establishing our board and time meeting for annual board meeting, which is July 11th, at 6 o'clock district office. And that is already set in stone, right Jen? Okay, then the, our monthly board meetings will be the second Wednesday of the month, and the exceptions would be October meeting, which will be the last Wednesday in October, the 24th, and our March meeting, which because of the T.A.S. Ashwabhanan will be March 20th. Okay? Alright, let's move on then to citizens and delegation, does anybody like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Not on the agenda. Okay, let's move on then. And we have a student presentation, our Parkview Tech Sea Perch underwater robotics team. Is that you, Chris?
Yeah, I'm very happy to introduce our sea perch team. And if you have no idea what sea perch is, you're about to find out. These four students, so we have Max Mikulajczak, we have Pooja Patel, we have Evelyn Strubus, John Marshall, and we also have Hannah Theory who cannot be here tonight, and their coach Phil Layden. They are going to tell you about their fantastic time that they had in our own Ashwabhanan High School swimming pool with their sea perch robot.
So what is sea perch? The sea perch program provides students with the opportunity to learn about robotics, engineering, science, and mathematics. While building an underwater R.O.V. as part of the science and engineering technology curriculum, throughout the project, students will learn engineering concepts, problem solving, teamwork, and technical applications. So for our sea perch competition, we had to build our robot, and we had to design. There was an original design that we could base our project off of, we decided to change a few things to make it easier to maneuver through an obstacle course in the challenge project.
So what we had to do was we had two tasks. Our first task was to drive our robot under some, under, over, around some hoops. And we had to go forward, and we had to go the same way we went back.
So something about our robot then is slightly different than others is that we've decided to scale it down a little bit, make it a little bit smaller. We had to make sure that these floaties over here were perfectly placed so that our robot would stay underwater, but then be able to go up at the same time.
As you can see, we had a little bit of issues in our propellers as we tried, I think it was a right one?
Oh, left.
Or a left, sorry. And it was, it was hard to drive the robot and maneuver underwater. So we were having some difficulty on the, towards the end of it.
Though we did not take first place in this part of the challenge, we did take first, getting the best timing with our second challenge project, where we had to carry weighted objects from a higher platform to a lower platform, all in a timed period. So we took first place with that part, and we ended up getting first place in the competition, which is allowing us to hopefully go to nationals sometime later in early June.
That basically sums it up.
Were you able to do a number of different time trials before you were able to have to do your competition? Did you find some things that you really needed to change?
Yeah, the propeller was faced the opposite direction so that it would kind of just sit above the water, and you would have to ease around a little bit for it to actually sink below. So after we messed up on the first one, we just flipped it upside down for the weighted ones that right away we could just get right off the wall and submerge immediately, so.
So it looks like you have a propeller to go up? Or is that in the middle there, is that one going down?
Ah, for both.
It does, oh, it goes both, okay. Alright, did you have to compensate for the weight of the power cord?
Oh, a little bit, but not too much, it's not too heavy or anything.
Alright, so is there a way to do it without a cord?
Not as of right now.
Not yet?
But we could work on it.
Great, that's awesome.
Mr. Layden, did you have anything to add about sea perch or...
I just have one thing that I found odd that they didn't mention. When you asked if there was anything that they had to change about it, on their practice run, I thought, I remember your propeller falling off in the pool.
Yeah.
Which, which was kind of a big thing, I thought, but...
It was a manned mission.
Had a diver going off for it, but...
Right.
Outside of that, no, they did a great job.
Mr. Layden had indicated that while he's the advisor for this group, he does not have to do very much whatsoever.
Not with these kids, I don't.
Because they take the lead.
So are you ready to attach a camera to it?
It might not carry that much.
Add some flirtations back again.
There you go.
Figure it out.
Sounds cool. Well, great, congratulations. So we'll need to approve the consent agenda, which consists of our regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 12th. The meeting minutes from our executive sessions held on March 12th. Schedule checks written, March 1st through April 2nd. Staffing retirement request of Michael Zelzer from his full-time head custodian position. Resignation of Brittany Sheehy from her full-time cross categorical position at Parkview. And the hire of Andrew Bake as our new principal at Valley View. Is he here today?
Yes.
Congratulations. And resignation of Nancy Upstone from her .29 FTE position as associate at Queremere. The new hire of Haley Jones, so 1.0 cross categorical instruction teacher at Pioneer. We have co-teacher contracts, which is one. And then we have the financial reports from February, so the dashboard and the summary. Do we get a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Do you need a second?
Oh, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Brian?
Okay, seems to be a monthly event for us, but a lot to be proud of. If you're in Ashwabhanan, last month, we acknowledged and celebrated the accomplishments of our awesome dance team. I know a lot of you are here tonight for another item on there. I just wanted to also say, give a big thanks and congratulations. I know Mr. Layden just left, but as a coach and an advisor, our tech ed team, they just continually find a way to rock it. So now we've got international, national competitions going on. Lot of things to recognize here. I'm gonna start with, let's go to global recognition for the Destination Imagination teams. I'll say it again, they did it again this year. We had three teams this year now going on to global competition. The teams' names were the Baconers, Team Nobody, and the New Dimension. Let me just break out, from Pioneer School, the Baconers, they earned the first place. People that were involved with that, that's Aaron Carlson, Lauren Carlton, Addison Munslof, Lily Paprocki, and I wanna thank Jim Paprocki and Eric Peters, the managers of that team. We had Team Nobody, they took a second place, this was from the high school level now. Madeline Baten, Eli Gregg, Kenley Crowsey, Madeline Martin, Lexie Moran, Bryn Shinton, Marissa Vanek, and they were managed by Joy Martin and Erica Shinton. We had a second place also, the New Dimension, again from the high school level. That's Elena Adamazek, Brianna Adamazek, Michaela Bloom, Joel Carlson, Jackson Gothier, Tyne Kroll, and Nate Tate. And they were managed by Kevin Adamazek and Bob Lupke. They also received the first place award in the instant challenge. So congratulations to them, they move on. The global finals are held on May 23rd to May 26th, and they'll be moving on to Tennessee to represent Ashwabhanan. I also wanted to acknowledge, we had five students. The highest honor that you can earn in a music, from a musical sense at the high school level is to make the honors choir, the orchestra, the honors ensembles. And we have five students this year that were selected to participate in state honors groups. So congrats to Sam Stanko. He was selected to actually be in the honors orchestra. And then we had four of them that are going on into the honors treble choir. That's Sarah Gregory, Madeline Minor, Annie Pfeiffer, and Kate Stenson. Two additional students were named as alternates. That's Alex Shioko and Hannah Swan. They were two band students that are on the alternate list, so congratulations to them. And the last thing I just wanted to highlight, we like to give updates periodically on our Performing Arts Center. Kate Green just forwarded to me yesterday that we're up to about 27,130 patrons now that have taken in shows at the Performing Arts Center. That's over 13,000 that have attended during the last seven months. And I don't know if you know, but we posted recently information about the Little River Band. They're gonna be performing on February 19th. Kate just wanted everyone to know, as a result of posting that, bringing that group in here, they've noticed like a 66% increase on the amount of hits and web traffic. So that's including about 3,300 new or unique visitors now that are being attracted to that site. So hats off to Kate Green and to the Performing Arts Center Advisory Board and the work that they're doing, they just had a meeting this past week. Now they're identifying creative ways to do some fundraising. I also wanna just change gears and acknowledge, Jen just shared with me before the meeting, Shopko just came forward and donated $2,500 to our foundation, the Ashwabhanan Education Foundation. So we just have a lot of people that continue to support and show their support for Ashwabhanan. So as parents and as individuals out here that if you're connected to these businesses or those individuals, help us and join in by supporting their businesses, and also by just, you know, coming forward and thanking them for their support. And obviously, the Sea Perch International Competition and what they have, we wanna acknowledge all of those students that we just heard from a couple of minutes ago. What a neat experience. You know, we talk to business people a lot as administrators, and we try to determine what are the most important things we need to do to prepare you students to be in the world of work. And what's more important than creative problem solving, speaking skills, thinking on your feet when a propeller falls off, knowing what to do? That's really real life. And I know, of course, we have a bias sometimes, but Destination Imagination and things like sea perch and those competitions, you can't make that up. Those are exactly the skills that we know a lot of business people are looking for, so. Congratulations, I guess I...
Chris, will you talk a little bit about the sea perch trip?
Oh, okay.
Oh, they wondered if they should stay, to stay.
Oh, I see. As far as...
So it's in June, early June, June 1st, I believe, is when they would be heading out. They would only miss one day of school. And Mr. Layden will be traveling with them, as well as perhaps a few parents are gonna go also. And they will be flying there, they will compete in Massachusetts, and then they will hop on a plane and return for school after the weekend. So they are the one team traveling from this area to represent Parkview and the Ashwabhanan School District at nationals. And it's the first time that we've been involved in sea perch, and it's turning out really great.
And I would just add to that, they won a $1,500 stipend, and they're gonna fundraise around $450 a student. So they're making a big investment and making this work. I don't personally see this any different than the honor of us supporting DI and the other national competitions that we've been involved with, so.
Mr. Layden thought it was going to be anywhere from $400 to $600 per student.
Okay, $400 to $600, okay.
Can I add one quick thing to your comments about the PAC? I went to the piano performance over the weekend, and there were, I think it was a full house, it was about 700 people there. And I kinda pride myself on knowing people from Ashwabhanan. I didn't know anybody there. So there were 700 people that had never been to that venue before, and the comments that I heard were fantastic. So I would imagine we're gonna get some repeat business from that group, as well as a lot of people coming to other performances as a result of that. So it really was a pretty big deal.
Thanks. Very nice. Okay, who else? Okay, let's move on to action item number one, the dance team. Nick?
Sure, I'll just introduce our dance team and their request. Our dance team is interested in going to Florida next year over the late part of February into the early part of March for a national competition. They've done this in the past, I believe in the board packet, there was some information about it. I'm gonna turn it over to Rodney and Drew, they do an outstanding job with these girls. I see they brought quite a few of them. Hopefully, perhaps they'll say some words too about the importance or significance of the trip. They go, they went two years ago, so it's kind of a once every three year trip that they've planned, and they're not asking for any dollars. They do an awesome job fundraising for darn near 100% of their costs of dance and their season. The high school administration supports this trip so long as they touch base with their teachers beforehand and all those good things. One side note with this last year's group, their GPA was, I think there was 23 or 20 or 22 girls, and their average GPA was a 3.4 or 3.5. So they do take the classroom very serious, and I would see nothing short of that from this next year's group. But I'm gonna turn it over to Rodney and Drew, and they can talk a little bit about the trip.
Okay, I'm Rodney Anderson, one of the coaches of the dance team.
I'm Drew Minow, I'm also one of the coaches.
And then we have two of our incoming seniors, Lauren Haynes and Ava Brandt with us. So what we're asking is to travel to Orlando, like Nick said, the end of March into early February.
End of February into early March.
End of, end of February into early March, next year with the team. We have done this twice before. It's a great competition, we see a lot of teams down there that we don't get to see ordinarily. We have gone to events in Minnesota. They tend to be a little bit smaller, and the competition isn't quite as fierce as down in Florida, so that's why we look forward to getting down there.
I'd say kind of backing off that, or banking off that a little bit is, this past competition we went to, we were only competing against, I'd say, six to five teams from all over. And in Florida, when we were there, when we won two years ago, we had 15 teams, 16 teams in each of our divisions. So it's a different animal in itself, so we get to see a lot more competition down there. I think that our girls overall, they have proven themselves to do what we've asked them when we go on these types of trips. We do have study sessions for them on bigger ones like the Florida one, so we try to schedule time that they bring their homework along, that they're doing some homework when they're there, and then also just taking that responsibility upon themselves before the trip as well.
Do you guys have any questions?
I just have a comment, I know I read all the information that you guys have presented, and you know, the detail that you guys put into this trip, and I know I've been involved the last two trips that you guys went, and you guys have had some phenomenal dancers that have come through there, and I know it's a great experience for you. And the amount of work that you guys put in there, I mean, hats off to, I think it's definitely worth it, and I think you'll also see a lot of great experience by going there again.
Thank you.
Girls, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we got here for the girls.
Maybe the last time, the last time we went in...
So, we both went our sophomore year, and it was just like a really good experience to see different teams. Because when we traveled to Minnesota, there's still a couple of Wisconsin teams, and a lot of the style is pretty similar. But when you travel three hours on a plane, you're gonna see a lot of different dances, and it's a really cool experience.
I think it was a really great challenge for us as a team, because Wisconsin does have a very different style of dance, and for us to see teams from Florida and California and these larger schools, and for us to compete against them was very challenging and different as a dancer, and to learn from that experience and see how we can be better as a team also. And it was just also a great bonding experience, I know, as a team. And for girls to go to a competition of that level that would never be able to go to something like that in anything else.
Do you have something to add?
I just wanna compliment you, I know how many hours you put in, at all hours of the morning and Sunday afternoons, and it's, we're very proud of you. It's a good example of good things happen when you work hard. And it sounds simple, it sounds maybe trite, but you work hard and coaches push you. We're fortunate to have two very talented coaches, that goes without saying, right? In the environment that we're in right now and the opportunity we have, so, congratulations.
I'll just add that Drew and Rodney, you know, they talk competition, competition, competition. We really make it a point of emphasis, or I do with all our coaches, to say, what else are you doing with your kids? And the dance team, throughout the course of their year, they're participating in canned food drives. They do, they did a hope for, handbags for Hope this year. So they're doing more than just getting these girls prepared for dance. They're saying, what else can we do with these girls to raise awareness around, to help our community and to help people that need help? So that's what I really value with these two guys, is that they make them, put a value on the importance of all the other things that we want them to, so. Not that that should get them to Florida.
And I would just say on a personal level, I really appreciate the times that I've been able to go. I know I am the teacher in the district, and having that opportunity to be able to go on these trips when I am missing a significant amount of teaching time, and the possibility of missing some conference time too. I appreciate the opportunity to go with them and have this experience and be able to mentor them through it. I know it's hard a little bit not being at school, but I think the payoff is good for what I'm doing.
I was gonna say, I got to see a couple halftime shows, and just some great energy. The girls just did a really good job out there. You can just tell the discipline they have and just the excitement, you can see it on their face, and very well coached, so, yeah, great job.
Okay, and that...
Do we need a motion?
We would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the dance team trip as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second motion?
You got a motion in a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's go to our discussion items, we have a nice variety of them tonight. Tammy will start us off with our student safety and wellness report.
It was up the whole time.
You were here like 45 minutes ago, you didn't try this out before.
It was up the whole time, up until, until it wasn't. Does everyone know Scott and Mandy are tech people? Scott loves to be called a tech person. Thank you, Scott.
It's good to get some camera time, isn't it?
There you go.
Way to go.
Thank you both. Welcome. A group of us are here tonight to present, after the board had some questions about student wellness and how we set up our school system for success for kids. So I want to start by introducing some of the members of the team that are really hard workers, who really help our kids outside of the regular classroom setting to really set the stage for student success. So if you want to just introduce yourselves, can you kind of tell where you are and what you do?
Yeah, I'm Bob Rupp Kilbride, the school psychologist and the district assessment coordinator. My office is at Pioneer, but I work for the entire district, from Corneer all the way up to the high school, and also take care of our students that we have attending Silver House School.
I'm Andrea Pascolucci, I'm a school social worker at Corneer in Bellevue, and also the district's homeless liaison.
I'm Kelly Lorenz, I'm the part-time school social worker at Pioneer. My office is there, and also the part-time Native American advocate for the school district.
I'm Amy Dillenberg, I'm a school social worker for grade 6 through 12, Soul Parkview Elementary School.
I'm Lori Bachman, school counselor at Parkview.
I'm Jill Clis, the counselor at Pioneer.
Mike Michalski, school counselor at Bellevue.
Tim Boyle, high school counselor.
John Gilbert, high school counselor.
These people do so much behind the scenes, it's just amazing. I'm going to talk about some of that. We're also going to open up the floor for questions that you might have after I go through this. Please know that there's so much involved in how we work with students with emotional needs, social-emotional needs, behavior, that we are touching on a lot of it in the presentation today, but as you saw from all the information that we sent out ahead of time in the board packet, it's big. There's a lot involved, we do a lot of surveys of what we're doing to make sure that we are really hitting the key things that we need to hit. But there's always work that we can do. So when we talk about student wellness, this is something that we use across the district for both academic and for social-emotional learning. And what we call it, it's the pyramid model, and it's morphed into more of a circular model over the years, but I think for understanding the basics of what we do, this is a really good model to start to talk about. So tier one, both from academics of what kids are learning in the classroom and from social-emotional learning, that's what all kids get. So we work on academics with kids, and we work on social-emotional learning with kids every single day. This tier one area typically hits about 85 to 90% of our kids. So what we do at that level works. And that's why it's really important to have really good tier one services for kids, whether it's academic or social-emotional, because our model is very preventative. The more we do on the front end, the fewer kids we're going to see needing tier two, either academic or social-emotional supports, or those intense interventions that you might see at tier three. So when Jill gets up and talks frequently, she talks about the academic side of it. I'm more that social-emotional side of it, but we definitely tie it all together because we know that learning doesn't happen in isolation. If you want kids to be academically successful, you have to meet their social-emotional needs, or they're not going to be readily available for instruction. So that's what we're constantly working on, is how can we tie all this together to really make learning a success for students? So, some of the research shows that good mental health is critical to children's success in school and life. We all know this. Research demonstrates that students who really, who receive good social-emotional and mental health supports, it improves our climate, classroom behavior, on-task behaviors, academic success, and that connectedness. Kids feel connected when they're in a socially safe place to be able to learn. We have to remember that when we talk about mental health, it's not simply talking about mental health illness, it's talking about mental health wellness. So how can we stay mentally healthy so we don't get to the point that we are under stress and having a lot of issues that cause some of the tragic things that we see happening today in society? And that's the role of this group and our regular teachers, to really make learning and the social-emotional environment positive for kids, so they feel safe, they feel connected at school. So that's what we're constantly trying to work on. We know that left unmet, mental health problems are linked to negative outcomes. We see a lot of academic failures, behavior failures, dropping out, delinquency, and some of the tragic things we hear in the news because kids aren't connected and kids aren't getting the help that they need. So, mental health, when you look at that pyramid, if you break it down into mental health, very much the same thing. School-based prevention and universal systems, that's the key that hits most kids. And research shows from the tragic incidents that happen, most of those cases aren't kids who are special education students. Like you think, oh, they have a lot of behaviors and they're in special ed. Most of those kids aren't. They're kids that are disconnected, that have had a lot of trauma in their life, and they have chose a route that is not productive, and it's very tragic for them and others around them. So what our, what our school focus is, is trying to be very preventative. When that doesn't work, then we work up the system with more and more different types of supports. And I have some examples that we put together of what those look like. So universal, this is what we're doing to help students feel connected, because that's the core of what we try and do. Connect kids so kids make good choices, they feel connected, and they're successful. Some of the things we provided for staff in the last year, trauma training. We have one building at Parkview that has, it's in its third year, Amy. They have a mental health grant, so they have a core team that's been trained around trauma. And then they've put in many, many hours of training with all the staff in that building to help build capacity and learn better ways to reach out to kids and connect with kids. We also have seven staff members in the district who went through a four-day training last year to become trauma trainers. The seven of us, then this school year, spent four parts of staff development days, taking that trauma information to the district staff that aren't involved in the Parkview Mental Health Initiative. And we gave them that information, to teach them ideas and strategies of what you can do. And it's first building awareness, and that was the biggest part. And I know you saw the trauma survey and the results of a lot of people saying, yeah, we knew some of this information, but we didn't know a lot of it, and it helped build our awareness. And now staff is asking for follow-ups, and now what can we do in the classroom? And how can we help kids be better ready to learn? So we found that to be very, very eye-opening and very successful for a lot of staff. Poverty training, we brought that in at the elementary level this school year. We've had that in the past as well, we're hoping to get that middle school and high school experience, where they get to be members of society that struggle with poverty, and it's a simulation where they just, they get that experience of what that's like. And just to build that awareness of, this is what these kids deal with, this is what these parents deal with. Because in our world, as people who might be in the middle-class realm, we don't always get where they're coming from. Why do they dress like that? Why do they act like that? Why do they behave like that? Because that's not our normal? That's their normal, and it helps people understand that, not to make excuses for what their behavior is, but to better understand it and be able to work with the kids then. We've done abuse and neglect training. We've had mental health first aid for two summers, where we brought in counselors from outside the district to do mental health training for a complete day, teaching about a number of different mental health issues, so teachers can be a part of that to understand mental health and tips for the classroom. We're hoping to be able to offer that again as a summer institute this summer as well. I talked a little bit about the Mental Health Project Parkview's been involved with. They are continuing the grant for next year, which is great. Our buildings use the multi-level systems of support, and some of them also use PBIS, just to have that common language of, this is the expectation, this is how it's reinforced, and these are the rules. Because we know that some kids are taught how to behave, and other kids aren't always taught how to behave, and we can't assume kids know what to do, we teach them what to do, and then we reinforce it. So we have been very specific on how to teach what walking in the hall looks like, how to teach what it's like to use a voice level zero compared to a voice level three. Not everybody knows that, so we go in and we teach them how to do that, and then we reinforce it with all the kids. Again, that's at universal level. Kids that aren't getting it will give more intense interventions at that tier two and tier three levels. We've been giving student, family, staff climate surveys. Some of that's been through STUDER, some of that's been through PBIS, some of that's been through the mental health grant that they have at Parkview, just to get an idea of where everybody's at and what do they need. We've been using data to build equity and identify areas of student needs. That's been really eye-opening since we've gone to using Educlimber to get more data, because we can break it up by ethnicity, we can break it up by gender, attendance, and really looking at what are the issues we're struggling with, so we can focus on that at that universal level as well. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I sent you the results of that. Last year was the first year we did that, it was our pilot year. We did it with seventh grade and with ninth grade students. And that survey is put out by the state of Wisconsin, so DPI puts that out. Every other year, they do the survey with certain districts that they randomly select. And then districts like us, who aren't involved in that, have the option to do it for free, and then we can compare our data to the state data. So unfortunately, when we did it last year, the last time they had enough participants involved was 2013, so our results were compared to that. They just now put out the results that they recently had, so when we have our survey done again next year, we're hoping to do it at the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade level, and then we can compare the overall state data to ours. So we'll have more recent data too. But that's something that we've used with building health curriculum. The counselors, people service, staff members have looked at that. Administration looks at that to kind of see where are areas we need to make sure we're hitting, because we want to be able to focus on where our kids are at. And then our mental health needs assessment, we started that last school year. That's what brought to a head the need for the trauma training. So we put that in, built in the training at the end of last school year, and then trained staff this year as a result of that needs assessment. So those are all some of the universal things that we're doing to kind of gather information and work with staff to help build capacity. So again, 80 to 90% of kids at that first tier level are exposed to a number of these different things that are listed here. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but there are a number of different things that address social-emotional learning that really helps kids better understand who they are, how to deal with things, and how to connect. The focus periods, that's something that's been added at the middle school and high school more. We've been really trying to focus on how teachers can connect with kids and identify with where they're at. And we've really seen that help with kids being able to communicate more with teachers and connect more with staff. Then if you look at the tier two, that's where more targeted interventions are needed. Again, that's not everybody, that's at 5 to 15% of kids who tier one is good, but they need something more. This is a number of the different things that we do. Small group counseling, we do the suicide follow-up sessions for kids. We have grief counseling, peer mentoring, check-in, check-out, a number of different things available to kids who need more supports. That, it's above and beyond what the universal supports provide. And those, again, not an all-encompassing list, but it covers quite a bit. And then those intense interventions for those kids that tier one wasn't enough, tier two is not enough. Some of them need real involved counseling. They might need crisis intervention. We had a few situations this week where we had to call the crisis center in to look at students, and then a student might need to be admitted, so we're working with the community agencies that way. We have our onsite mental health services, we're just starting that in Pioneer. We're working on getting that up and running this month. And then we have it pretty consistently. Amy, how many times, Amy and Lori, is the counselor at Parkview now?
Twice a month.
Okay, twice a month, we have a counselor in every, for half a day. We have a counselor in at the high school for half a day, and then we have a counselor who's starting to work at Valley View, and now, again, we're getting it up and running at Pioneer. So that has been really, really positive for us. We're meeting with them in a couple weeks, I think two weeks, where we can talk about maybe more ways to get in-home counseling and different things going for families too, so we can wrap around those services. We work with the crisis center, anytime that we feel like it's a situation that the student's behavior is a risk to themselves or somebody else, we contact the crisis center, they'll either call, or they'll come in and they'll assess the student and determine where to go, so that's been great. Something that we started last year too is a CST process. This is a process where the school, Brown County Human Services, and then therapists from the community wrap around the parent and the student, and it's a parent-led group where we talk about, how's it going at home? What supports do you need? What do you need at school? And what is the, what can the community also provide? And do you need more in-home counseling or things like that? So kids who have a lot of mental health services in the community, it brings us all together, so we're talking the same language. And so, so a parent doesn't feel like, well, now I've got to go to school and tell them what the doctor said and what the counselor said. We all come around the table, usually every four to six weeks, and talk about, how is it going, where are things at? And it really builds capacity for parents. It helps parents feel like they aren't that outsider around this table being talked to, they're part of that team, and it's led by the parents. So we found that really successful. We have homebound instruction for some students that we've seen with a lot of anxiety issues. Some who have medical issues, so they aren't able to get into the school, so we will provide that. We have our challenge program for the special ed students who can't, the high school's not, not the best fit for them, or maybe the middle school isn't a good fit and they're really struggling, so we will use that with our special ed students. Mock Village and Advocates for Healthy Transitional Living, those are two off-site programs that we also contract with, for kids who have a severe behavior that they just can't hold it together during the school day. We have a crisis plan in place for those kids. If they still aren't able to hold it together, we'll do a phone call with one of those groups. They'll try and talk the student down. If the student's still really escalated, then we will have them removed from school and go there for the rest of the day, just to work through the issue and get de-escalated. So that's another, another, two other options that we utilize. Day treatment is something that parents have access to. There's two different day treatments in the community, where students will go there for mental health services, and they will get some academic support if it's appropriate. And then we also work with Balance Psych and Willow Creek, which are more crisis-type places that do inpatient for anywhere from two days to 10 days for a student to get them stabilized. And then they work with the doctors as the students transition back to home and school. So there's a lot of intense interventions we have too. Would I say all of this stuff fixes every issue? It doesn't. You know, we try and be as proactive as we can, again, by being really conscious of that tier one support that we give all kids, so hopefully they don't get to this. But we try and build supports in at each level as we need to. So upcoming staff trainings, I talked about the mental health first aid. We have Rick Van Acker, he was a professor at the University of Chicago at Illinois. He's coming in to speak to all staff by building level at the beginning of the school year to talk about behavior management, connecting with kids, and how not to get into power struggles with kids, and different ways to approach kids. He's a very animated speaker, but he really, he hits some areas that I think are really good to work on, because we've heard teachers saying, what do we do with these kids in the classroom? So hopefully he'll be able to give them some good tips and ideas. We're hoping to get zones of regulation training stretched out to the buildings that aren't doing it as much as others right now. Valley View really kicked this off this year, where that was one of the building initiatives. They work with members of the team to really help build capacity with staff. And it's in other buildings as well, we're starting to use it more and more. But we've really found, if we help kids understand their behavior and what it, the zones, it works in a color system, so if you're red, or if you're blue, or if you're yellow, you say, this is how I'm feeling, and now I've been taught strategies of how to calm down when I feel like this. Or how to get myself going when I'm feeling like this. So the Zones of Regulation has really helped kids get- So the Zones of Regulation has really helped kids get in a better frame of mind for learning. We've been talking about culturally responsive practices. We're going to continue talking about that as far as race, poverty, and trauma are concerned because we know that we've got to meet kids where they're at and understand where they're coming from and able to, in order to be able to meet their needs. We're hoping our mental health providers, that we can get some funds in the future through some of the grants that are out there from DPI to have our mental health providers work with staff and give them coaching tips and ideas on different mental health areas. And then DPI has come up with the Social-Emotional Learning Standards. That is by grade level, and it talks about specific social-emotional learning that should be happening at each grade level, and how, we'll be working with staff on how to incorporate that into what they currently already do. So if you're reading a book on a student or a character and the parent says something, it's, what do you think they were thinking then? How would you respond to this? It's a lot of stuff we do every day, but it's making it more intentional. How are we intentionally teaching kids how to think through this and talk through this? Rather than just incidental. So some of the needs, some of the needs we know is we need an alternative setting to serve students with intense needs. We've talked about that here at the board level already. Individual counseling, more time for that, building staff to be able to do more of that, and getting our community agencies in to do that. Restorative justice, that's training that we've talked about at more of the middle school, high school level for teaching kids, you do this, and here's how you restore that situation. They've started doing some of that at Parkview through their Mental Health Grant, and it's just, it's really holding kids accountable and teaching them that when you do this, you have to restore that relationship, and how do you do that? So working on that, creating programs to empower more students to be involved, more culturally responsive practices, and then how to handle crisis situations, both how can staff handle that and how can students handle that? Because we know with this tech world that we live in, kids are being expected to really be counselors for their fronts, and they have it at their fingertips and they see it every day. How can we help build that capacity to help have them say, you know, you need to reach out and get some help? You're not the, always the one to be able to do that. So funding ideas. That's always the big question. How do we pay for all this? There are two grants. The first one is aid for mental, school mental health programs. Our governor just recently put that up, where they'll pay up to fifty percent aid for social work services. Right now, it's written that they're going to pay for services that were added the last two years, which we didn't have money, so we didn't add services. So we're hoping that will continue. If that pot isn't there, they will make that moving forward. So if we do add services, they will provide some funding for that. There's also competitive grant, the School-Based Mental Health Service Grant. I met with the county directors today. We talked about some different ways that we could come together as a county and some of the smaller districts to provide some services for kids around mental health and what that might look like. It does need to be based around school-based mental health, but it does talk about screening and intervention services. And there are two screening tools that our team has talked about, bringing in to be able to look at student wellness that kind of pinpoints those early red flags for kids, and then these groups can work with kids to get them help upfront. Restructuring our service delivery model is always something to look at, but it's like anything else. If you, if you don't do one thing, who's going to do it and how do you make time for that? So it's always something that we talk about, along with at our, at our staffing meetings. We're constantly talking about around the table, you know, what do we need to cut to make this happen? Because you hear it every year, we're cutting money across the board every single year. You know, when does it get to the point where there isn't anything left to cut? Our class sizes are high, we have all this. What do we do? How do we come up with money? So I don't always have an answer for that, but we do definitely have some grants that I'm going to work with this team and administration to try and apply for, to get some money to hopefully help fund some of these things so we can get more services for kids. Questions for the team. Here they are.
I would just like to say how much it's appreciated what you all do. I have the honor of getting to see it on a day-to-day basis sometimes, and no, you can't fix everything, and no, you're not going to catch everything, but the effort that's put forth by every single one of you to try is incredible. So for people who don't have the privilege that I have, please know that that's happening, and it's overwhelming sometimes. It's really amazing. So you guys are awesome.
I think it's really good to know that, you know, like I said, things are going on in our country as far as violence is concerned. We have a very caring group of people here, and Tammy, it looks like you really did, not only just right now, but have been continuing to put a good, form a good committee and have ideas out there, and you have a plan that's ready to go, and if something happens, you have something else that's ready to go after that. So it's not something that you just threw together here. I can see that, that there was a lot of time and effort though, putting into this, and I think I also would commend you guys for everything that you guys did.
So you all are the, you're the front line, I mean, and as was mentioned, with some of the things that have gone on in the schools around the country, violence and shootings and whatnot. Do you all feel that the types of things that we have here in the district, are they meeting the needs? Do you see those events and say, we could have done more for those kids? Or are we doing what's right for our kids when you see those types of things? And is there something missing? Is there anything that we, as a collective group, should be focusing on or thinking about in that area? It's a big question.
I think one of the things, we see these things in the media, and these terrible things that happen. The things we don't see are the things that don't happen. You know, the students out there who received some type of intervention, some type of, you know, developed some type of meaningful relationship with a teacher, an adult in their life, and it was avoided. You know, and again, we will never know, right, how many times that happens. You know, we hope nothing ever happens in our schools. We plan nothing will ever happen. Statistically speaking, there are thousands and thousands of schools around the country, and these things happen in one school at one time. They don't happen in ten or twenty or a hundred schools. So again, it grabs our attention, and we still have to think, you know, what can we do? What can we be prepared for? But again, I look at it the other way around, you know, what are those kids, where are those kids that where we have met the needs and nothing happened? And again, we will never know.
I'm sure that gives you a lot of satisfaction, knowing that, that interventions and activities and work that you all have done has, you know, hopefully got those kids beyond the feelings that they might have had.
I think continuing the conversations always is really important, not only at, you know, just what we do with kids on a regular basis and families on a regular basis, but with the community. And we've had a lot of, we've had some talk and ideas around, you know, getting out to the community and just having critical conversations and good conversations, and know that we have things in place so that the community becomes aware, and they have an understanding of what's, what is behind, you know, students' motivations or behaviors or mental health, you know, whether it's wellness or illness. So I think just really getting us out there more and continuing these conversations, and it's nice to hear that we have your support in that.
Because it is so much bigger than us, you know, we're here at our elementary level, and we work really hard to make those connections, but it's the classroom teachers that make those connections, too. And if we have students that maybe don't have those positive role models in their world, we connect them to another teacher in the building who is then their care buddy, who then does give them extra attention. So just always looking for those ways of how do we connect? If it didn't work this way for this student, what else can we do? So we're always looking for what more can we do? Because we don't want anyone to fall through the cracks, you know? That's probably our biggest fear as counselors, is who are we missing in social awareness?
That's what I was going to say to add on to that. I just, I can't say enough about our staff, and there's so many, whether it's the kids in the school, the culture that we have, or the staff that we have, they're quick to call and just say, hey, you know, this kid doesn't seem right today, or... I can't speak for other schools. I don't know what happens in other schools. I don't know how those kids slip through the cracks, but I just really feel like I can't, I can't think of one teacher who would just turn the other way and just say, you know? I think every single person in that school, every teacher that we have, honestly, if the kid was having a bad day, would sit, would call and say, hey, can you just check on this kid? This kid doesn't seem right today. And I really honestly feel, believe that, and a kid will come down if it, whether it's nothing or whatever it is, a lot of times it's just nothing, yeah, I'm just having a bad day today. But just the thought that the teachers are kind of keeping an eye out for these kids makes me feel pretty good about it. And the kids, you know, like my friend's having a bad day, and, you know, my friend said something that was concerning, and, you know, there's a lot of that, so it makes me feel better, you know, just the culture around the school. And I don't know if that happens at other schools. I can't really speak for that, but so, you know, as far as what more, what more we could do, I mean, I feel like there's always kids that could be more connected, you know, there's kids that come in from other districts and things like that, you know, you wish there was something that, you know, they could just fall right in a place, but that's just not, that's not how kids always, you know, how it always works. But for the most part, I think we have a pretty good staff that keeps an eye on the kids.
Have you seen a change at all, probably more on the high school and maybe middle school side as well, since Parkland, Florida situation? Have you seen any change in how our students are dealing with things, or dealing with their friends, and maybe, you know, mental health issues that they see in their classmates or their families?
I think I've seen a change since we've been a little more comprehensive about doing the Suicide Convention curriculums in the health classes. I think it's great because they do have quite a unit in the seventh grade health class on mental health, but I feel like often when kids are stepping forward, they're like drawing things directly out from that SOS curriculum in terms of, hey, you know, I know you came in and said this, so I didn't want to miss saying something. And it wasn't that they weren't doing that before, and, you know, it may be tied to, you know, many of the things over the last few years that have been in the media, too, that kids are just a little more proactive about stepping forward. I think some of it is social media because, you know, it's pretty much out there in their face when things come up often because kids are out on social media, so maybe that's why they're stepping forward more. But I've definitely seen an uptick, I would say, in kids stepping forward when they're concerned about the mental health of friends, especially with the self-harm.
And wanting to talk. Kids want to talk.
Just finding the people to talk to, yeah. Having the bodies to make that happen.
Tammy, I think one of the important points that you made was that the kids that you are not seeing these major issues with are the kids that are in special education. These are your everyday, average, ordinary kids coming from, coming to school, sometimes they don't have the best home life, sometimes they have good home lives. It's the kids that are getting picked out. It's the kids that, you know, are in the corner and you don't see them, but they, they see you, and they're the ones that are looking for the need.
You know, I have a really touching example. As sad as it is, there was a student at the high school who left school one day. Regular ed teacher, didn't know the kid, kid didn't really know her, but she looked at him and just said, hey, have a great night. And he came back a short time later and said, I was going to kill myself that night, but you wanted to see me tomorrow, and said, have a good night. I think she said, I'll see you tomorrow. And he said, I came back because you wanted to see me. You know, just those little things. We don't realize the small comments that we make, and even to one another during the day, how much it can break you down or how much it can lift you up. And I think that's, you know, that's a takeaway, you know, when we go to the grocery store, wherever we go, how nice is it to just acknowledge someone and just say, hey, great shirt you got on. Hey, it's nice to see you. Thanks for helping me. You know, we forget how important those words are to people every single day. And, you know, it just, we're such a reactive world that we want to put everything in place to deal with the reaction of the bad things that happen, when really we need to be putting things in place for regular ed and people like this group here to do good, positive things upfront. So we don't ever have to deal with the shootings and all of that, because we can say, but we did A, B, C, and D, and it didn't have to get there. Rather than, well, let's, let's, and not that I'm saying, I love my PLOs that we work with here. Police liaison officers are fantastic, and bulletproof glass is great and all of that, but what if we didn't even have to get there? You know, it's sad that that's what we're looking at spending money on, and we could really be doing it up in the forefront, working with the kids and putting things in place. I don't know if any of you have other comments? If you have other questions of the team? Because they're silent people that you don't hear much from, and they're like, we don't want to talk. You know, you need, you need to meet them and know what they do, because they're amazing people who really, really, truly connect with these kids. It's amazing what they do, and I wish I could have a hundred kids around here to say, oh my gosh, this person has done this and changed my life, because these people really, and our regular ed staff as well and administrators, they really impact so many kids. It's amazing. It really is.
I was going to say, Brian, your question about like what, what don't we know, or what can we do was your question. I think just the fact that you want to hear about this topic, I think we all appreciate. And also to know that, like how the board chooses to staff positions like ours, I know it's tough when we're a school and we're staffing teachers and, you know, we all understand that, but our department went through a lot of cuts in the last, I don't know, ten years. Someone could give you the numbers a little better than I could, where a lot of our department was cut, for I'm sure very good reason, but to have the board acknowledge that this is an important part of what we do in our schools, and a lot of us, all of us maybe, are bouncing between buildings, so I'm housed at Valley View, when a crisis comes up at Quarmir, you can appreciate that, you know, I'm not at my desk, Maria can't find me, I can't run right down there. And we make it work, but I guess I just wanted to thank you for spending the time on this and for being interested in this, and understanding that, you know, as the social-emotional part, you know, if it were to be cut and stopped in the future, you know, that just shrinks down the number of kids we can form relationships with, the number of preventative things we can put in place. So I guess I just wanted to highlight that, you know, thank you, but then also ask you to keep that in mind, you know, as we go forward and we try to make decisions for the school.
And I just wanted to add from a cultural perspective, meaning race and ethnicity, in all my years of training since I've been in this district, you know, it's a process for myself as a Caucasian woman to develop the ability to see life and education through other races and ethnicities lenses. And so, year after year, the trainings that I go to or recommend to teachers, staff, administrators, year after year, every training will tell you that you need to be, I call it culturally responsible. Some say culturally responsive, some say culturally relevant. I call it culturally responsible. To be able to put yourself in other people's shoes and see life through their lens. And I'm just focusing on race and ethnicity, because the majority of my job is traveling throughout the district and connecting with native students and their families. And so, but I also work as a social worker at Pioneer, working with other races and ethnicities there, too, so, and I see this quite often in my work with the children and families who are very strongly connected with their tribes and the roots of their tribal community, and how, when they, especially if these kids transfer from tribal communities and tribal schools into public education, it's a culture shock. It would be like one of us who have never been to another country that speaks a whole different language and has different beliefs and values and foods and music and everything, and you sit in their, their schoolhouse, whatever they call it, you know, their education system, and try to learn. You know, they, it's difficult if you've ever culturally immersed yourself that way. And so, we have to remember as a district that we have kids here who are struggling socially, emotionally, to feel they belong because they need to see themselves in their education. They need to see themselves in their surroundings, in their environment while they're here. They need to see themselves and read about themselves in the curriculum materials, and their families are longing for that. And so, my message to you is we need more of that in our district. We have teachers and staff who are passionate about this and working hard to get it rolling, but district-wide, K through twelve, I would really like to see more of that. I want to see more staff coming together, working together, to increase the awareness of the different races and ethnicities we have here, and building the curriculum so that these kids and families can see themselves in it. so that these kids and families can see themselves in it, which will then increase parent engagement, increase their trust in the public institution, um, and they'll want to be more engaged, they'll, um, better, it'll just, it'll be a win-win-win for everybody. The kids, the families, the community, the schools, to just, I could go on and on, but every year, all the trainings I go to, this is the message I always get. And, um, I just firmly believe that if we do that, we will start seeing achievement gaps reduce. We will see kids feeling happier because they'll feel a sense of belonging. You know, when kids open up a book, they want to see themselves, they want to be able to connect and relate, but they also want to learn about other people. So, um, you know, providing those materials, I think we're on a good track, we're working hard on doing that. Um, I've worked with several people in this district who are passionate about it and identifying who those kids are in their classroom and wanting to use the, the authentic, critically analyzed materials that are safe for classrooms. You know, that's another thing, making sure the materials we are using are safe and being critically analyzed by the people they are written about or the cultures, you know, that we are teaching the cultures, the diversity, in a safe manner and respecting them, you know, so I could go on and on, but I, I really think that we've done a lot of work, we still have ways to go, and when we do that, we're going to see kids feeling safer. When they come from inner cities and they come into our school, which we know is majority white, they're going to feel they belong more quickly. The transition will still be difficult, as you can imagine if you put yourself in their shoes, um, with all the stereotyping and races, races of media, but, um, it will help them.
Thank you. And that would be putting a little onus on our administrative staff to, to put their heads together, I think, and to see if we can figure out the side of the box. You know, obviously we're in a budget crunch that we are always in, but these guys do a fantastic job in coming up with some money that, I don't know where they get it from, but, um, we're going to get it from someplace. That would be, I would put on our administrative staff trying to figure out some money, some way that we can squeeze some of these things in there. All right, anything else?
I, I agree with you. I mean, obviously academics are important, but, um, for lack of a better word, what about just being kind and teaching kids how to be good grownups? So, and to do that, it takes resources. It take, I've learned that it takes relationship, which takes time and resources and people. So how do we do that?
All right, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. And then on to our next discussion item, um, safety prevention.
So, I'm just going to start by complimenting Tammy and all the counselors, social workers, Bob as a psychologist, um, Tammy's passion that she brings to this is pretty obvious, and you're right, it's, it becomes a tug of war over budget and resources and, you know, I, I know though that Tammy has taken this off initiative to secure grants, as Amy has and as many individuals have in this room. But it was neat for me, just stepping back a minute ago, to hear sincere compliments from our board, going back to you, when I think about the job you have, and John, what a neat comment, you know, can't think of a teacher that doesn't care and doesn't, that's pretty powerful. And I shift into another mindset, and I think of each and every one of you, in a sense, what Kelly was talking about is empathy, you are skilled and trained, you are all very empathetic, you listen carefully, you make those comments to individual kids that save lives. The toughest kid in the classroom, we can't figure out what to do with, who deals with those students and those families? It's a, it's a thankless job that you do day in and day out and, and you can't share the information. Sometimes you can't even share a lot of it with us as administrators, and we respect that, because you keep that, you protect that privacy. So, you, I know there's nights you don't sleep, I know there's food and money and clothing that you personally gift these kids, uh, it is, it's all about relationships. So, thank you. The next section we're going to talk about here is interrelated, safety, prevention, um, what are we doing? My goal in this part is to sort of nutshell what it is we're, we're doing with safety and it's an ongoing process. Brian asked the question earlier, is there anything else we could be doing? We're constantly trying to look around the corner and dig. I want to compliment some people that are in this room that have been a big part of that. Go to Andy Jacob there, our new elementary principal at Valley View, he chaired this crisis communication committee for several years since I've been here, very diligent on annually updating that, that, um, that document, and I'll route it around here in a second. He, um, now Dirk Ribbons, who's interviewing tonight, by the way, for another position, so we have some administrators that are interviewing a lot of things tonight, the DARE program, the chief would be here tonight, but the chief and our PL officers are involved with the DARE program tonight. Want to also introduce and thank Lieutenant Schermitsler down here, he serves on our crisis committee, invaluable resource, very trained, very skilled, and I asked him just to be here tonight as we go through this, if we have anyone has questions or wants any input. It's not that Lieutenant is here to give a presentation or anything like that, but just to be, if you wanted to hear some of the comments in terms of what we're doing. So what I'm going to do is, let me just nutshell, as a district, here are just some of the things we talked about, um, we have monthly meetings with the district crisis team, that team, that's comprised of multiple district partners, as you can imagine, administrators, um, we have Mary Jo, a nurse on there, of course, our police liaison officers, Lieutenant Schermitsler, um, Mandy, information coordinator, in the past, of course, Brad, superintendent, and then Tom Schmidt from Buildings and Grounds. With that, out, out of that committee comes a lot of discussion about what's happening nationally, what's the national data, what's the most current, what are the most effective ways to react, to prevent, to respond, and we could talk a lot about this, but a lot of you have heard the acronym ALICE, a lot of leadership in this district, um, training, we've had several administrators and officers formally trained, that stands for alert, lock down, inform, counter, and evacuate. It's a, it's a symbol, a system that we put in place so that we can make a quick decision, and in most cases, that decision now is to get away from, know where the problem is and, and flee and get away from that situation. It's a little different than what's happening with some of the other training. There have been roundtable exercises, um, and training for administrators, we've done ALICE drills, we do periodic ALICE training scenarios for, with the staff, at staff in service, and then the crisis plan is basically this plan, and I'll route this around to if you want to take a look at it all. That's updated annually and it anticipates a variety of problems and scenarios, from bomb scares to violence to, you know, you name it, and, and gives, um, specific ideas on how to interact and what, and how to, how to react to a situation that happens. There's an icon on all of our computers that basically has all that information on it. So, it's on every desktop and all the buildings have paper, hard copies of this, so that's just, uh, we've also identified, as you know, and we had to try this out a, a couple months ago, an, an alternate evacuation site, if you will. So, the churches and the communities have been very supportive and have some identifying sites and having a protocol to utilize if we have to evacuate the site, and heaven forbid we really ever have to do this for real. Um, we have evacuation routes and sites, they're practiced, they're mapped, we, we have a live shooter scenario planned for all district staff, and it's going to be coupled with the public safety, that's going to happen this July. And what, one of the things that I know they're, they're looking to do, and Lieutenant can probably answer this better than I can, but they're trying to look at capacity of services, meaning what would the overflow, um, availability be at our area hospitals, for example? If X would happen, what is our system? So, we look at training and, and we're encouraging adults to participate in this, and it will be coupled with our teaching staff, administrators, summer, summer workers as well as, um, public safety. And I know it's not all detailed at this point yet, but that is on the books for this July. You know, we've increased the number and quality of security cameras. We have a red and yellow reference sheets, that's what I have here on this clipboard, and this is a, is a quick way to respond in your classroom, if you have an intruder, for example, the first thing my eye goes to, there are bullet points and five or six quick things that a staff member knows to do and how to access them. And there's information on both sides of that sheet too. And again, that's a compliment to the crisis committee, um, looking at what other schools have used, other organizations, and trying to just keep getting better. Compliment to Tom and his staff with maintenance, took some time, took some effort, but we put classroom numbers, we posted the numbers on the windows, they're visible for public safety, if you have an accident in this area or this area, public safety communication can, uh, can occur and we can try to pinpoint what, what's really going on. Um, the other thing we've done, and I want to compliment Keith in connecting with, um, it's an organization called McKinstry, and McKinstry is an outside organization that comes in and does a safety audit, right? So, um, last, this past March 23rd, they came in and they audited all of our buildings. This was a brief audit in that they, they walked through all the buildings, they looked at the locations of all the security cameras, they've identified where the cameras are pointing to, they've also looked at areas outside around the entrances to determine, is there an area that an individual could better hide or, so they're looking at all of these various things and trying to anticipate, you know, if there will be any problem spots. They met with the police liaison officers, they took notes and pictures, they've asked a lot of questions throughout all this. They're going to, and they're going to provide a presentation, obviously they're in, they're in a business to consult and they'll, they'll probably have some type of a proposal for us in, in the area of campus security and all that. So they plan to be here in May and they'll present the observations, uh, going back to what we said earlier, I don't think we should ever stop trying to get better and, and anticipate. I know we've had questions about, should we change out glass, should we do X, Y, and Z? We're trying to really work with all of the experts. You hear me say this a lot, but our public safety in Ashwabanam, where could a person better live if anything happened in your house or in school? I, I would argue this is the best place to be because the training that our public safety individuals have, it's multifaceted, right? It's their EMT, fire, they've, they've got, they've got the whole toolbox, um, and we're, we're fortunate to have that here. It only took minutes, I heard a story that, um, students and within, I think it was two minutes, you had a response. It was, it's amazing. So we're, we're blessed that way, I don't know how these schools do it that are remote, you know, we're blessed with our location, but it's, we've got good people too, so. I don't know if there is anything further, Scott or Lieutenant, that.
I could see.
Well, Jeff is back there, thank you for coming back. And whatnot, so, I don't know if you know Jeff Evans or other police liaison officer, Jeff serves on the crisis committee as well as, um, Jackie Dunlop, but obviously, so. I want to just stop and see if you have any questions, um, kind of know what's coming at you kind of in May, and certainly if Lieutenant, do you have anything further to share, your thoughts? You wanted kind of an overview, we wanted you to kind of know where we are with this and, you know, it's a moving machine, we'll, we'll continue to move on it, obviously, but any other suggestions or ideas, we're, we're all ears here.
Well, the one, first comment I'd make, and it's, and it has no question about all of the people in this room, is that this is recorded and broadcast. So, I don't feel real comfortable sharing a lot about our strategies, a lot about our prevention with, I, I, and I know the public has a right to know that we are doing things and anyone who is watching or listening to this needs to know that we do take this serious and the group here tonight, as well as the public safety, takes it very seriously. I, I wouldn't want to telegraph to anyone who might be wishing to do bad things what our plans are and what we do. So I, that's just a caution to anybody with this conversation.
I want to just take a second here, first of all, I appreciate what you said about public safety, that's great that you guys appreciate us, but what I want to do is, is say that having children in this district for the last 15 years, 14 years, something like that, and continue to have another daughter in this school district for the next 13 years, I appreciate and know how fortunate we are to have a staff like, and, and administration like we do here, that know that this is a private school, we need to, we need to really push that forward and work on it as much as we can. You know, the school shootings that are taking place, the spree shootings in general in the United States, most of them are occurring in places just like this, they're not the big cities, it's the places where there's 100 officers or less, or less than the agencies. That's, that's where these things are taking place, and we need to make sure that we're, we're being proactive on that. And that's why, working with the school district team, uh, crisis team, really, um, we have to be partners, it really puts us in a good spot because it's so important that we work as partners. If we, if we don't work as partners, we're going to be dropped. And, we've been in the same place several years, each one of these events that take place, we continuously have to change our plan, and we have to be ready to change it at any time. We learn something from each shooting. So, and if you think these kids are, I say kids, these people that are doing this in these schools aren't researching what works, what doesn't work, so we're sadly mistaken. Adam Lanza's friends in Sandy, he had a four by six sheet on the wall of what the last five hundred spree killings, but what worked, what didn't work? To kill people. That's what bothers me the most, is that there's people out there that want to do this to hurt people and that's their only reason behind it. That's why it's so important what you guys are doing, because we see something, say something, we're, we're that, we're that. Our frontline defense, again, that, the teachers, that the frontline defense of determining who these people are that really, really need the help and need the friends and need the, need the additional push to get them down the right, the right path. But I can't thank you guys enough for what you do, your, your job is a lot like our job, it really is, you know, and, and I, I trust you know what you guys do with the, with the basis, and I hope you guys are doing that, I really do. I would welcome any questions in regards to what public safety is doing in reference to this, but I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from as well, so.
I guess I would just like to say for the next month's meeting, when we talk about, it sounds like we're going to talk about specifics of school safety and, like, specific things, and you, if you ask me like, oh, should we spend money on this? Sure, we should spend money on that, but if we're doing a true comparison, that we just talked about all these, um, mental health initiatives and, and kind of saying like, we expect that group to just find the money themselves, but should we spend money on something specific? Like, it's almost like, should we do, you know, safety and school safety, or should we do this extra program in the mental health? If we're going to, you know, try and, to me, I'm about prevention, I'd rather spend money in mental health than school safety in general, so, you know, it's be hard to, you know, I don't know if there's any way if we're going to discuss, we didn't discuss specifics in spending money on one, but then we're going to discuss specifics in spending money on the other, that it doesn't seem like it's comparing apples to apples.
Ideally, we'd spend money on both, right?
Right.
I think they're tied.
Yeah.
Together, right?
So is the understanding that next month, that, so this company came and did kind of an assessment and they're going to come back and just kind of show us what they found? So we wouldn't necessarily need to make a decision, because we could also look at what kind of additional resources we can do.
Absolutely.
Here, or, um, you know, because I, you know, I do find it.
I think probably like you, I'm pretty curious how much they will bring to work, because this is a new venture for us, new for Keith to, and Tom and everyone, I know Kurt was part of that to walk through. I think we wait and see what they bring to the table, and we have to weigh it out, just like, from a safety standpoint, you could spend an endless amount of money, you know, we talked about, you know, different ideas. The real answer is, is both, and it's, it's, it's taking, it's using the resources in the way that we think would be the best for our kids. And I think every one of us in this room, being in education, we get prevention, early intervention.
intervention with mental health. I think we have a lot of discussions, I hope we continue to, about relationships. That's core to everything, but there are other things that are beyond our control that we need to be ready for also, right? And so we know that, that's just the world we're living in.
Yeah, I think after the shootings several weeks ago, one of the things that I did was, as I was reading articles and being more frustrated and angry at the media and how things are shared and presented, it was taking the ideas that were maybe not over the top, and I don't know, I made a list myself of just about 20 or more things that are somehow parent-related, they're community-related, they're non-control-related, they're school, what things that schools can do, what can the police do. So there is no one answer. There is no one thing to do, but that's why I'm looking forward to next month and hearing, you know, not only what we can do from a mental health standpoint and from a police standpoint, but we have to do something. I think the public expects us to think about and do mindful things that can help. Because, like you said, it's not necessarily the kids that you're coming in contact with that you feel are at risk. It could be someone totally out of the blue, it could be someone coming from another community, so probably putting ourselves less of a target, or, you know, have the ability to respond appropriately and not create a police state. But, anyway.
Can I just talk, I'm sorry, can I just talk briefly about billing security before you make any decisions on that next month or whatever it is? Is that, you know, people stop people. It's really wants to get anywhere they're going to. So when you talk about billing security, you know, just have some caution on spending a lot of money on that part of it, because if somebody doesn't get in that window or that door, they're gonna get in that one. They're gonna get in that one, or they're gonna get in a shop door, they're gonna get in, because these people have plans, very elaborate plans. And just like... Isn't going to necessarily stop a threat. So you gotta keep that in the equation on this whole thing, that really, you need people to stop people. And that's, I think, the way, if you saw the media last week, that the peers talked about putting additional officers in each school, that sort of thing, that will help, but how do you ensure officers are all... You know, I think that's the way we should kind of head to, just from my point of view, just... And we look at each one of these incidents that occur all over the nation and try to figure out what we can do better because of them. Now, that's where we really need to learn, and our tactics from a police standpoint have changed so much since 1999, that we have just been... As far as, you know, what we do when an incident like this takes place. And currently, we're doing a lot of these presentations out in the community, to businesses, whether it's commercial, residential, home healthcare, retail, every place. We are doing business presentations. We have in place, and it's a very good program, but they all mean the same thing. Run, hide, fight, avoid, deny, defend, it's all the same thing. Get out, if you can't do that, hide, if you can't do that, well, then, you know, you're gonna have to fight. But that is the basis on what we want everybody in the community to understand, whether you're in the community or the church, you need to learn that you need to do something. And I think that's, I think just the education in itself is something more that we're providing this community that helps. And it's important to get that information out, my two cents.
Brian, if I could just add one thing. I did participate in the walk-through of the security... And I just want to give you some reassurances that when we did do the walk-through, I think they were very impressed with the measures and the things that we have in place from a structural standpoint, a canon standpoint, and even a staff standpoint. With how our schools reacted, and they did a couple of things where they would walk into school, and in one instance, I think our police liaison officer almost had her side up, she was acting like a perpetrator in the school, because one of our noon-duty supervisors went and alerted her that there was a suspicious person in the school. Knowing that the staff is aware and the mechanical and physical things that we have in our schools, I think that we are in good shape, and certainly, the McKinstry will have some ideas on how we may improve on some of the things that we have, but we do have a pretty solid structure in place, so. I just needed to share that with you so that you are aware of where we are at in safety and security.
Hey, anybody else? Anything else? Thank you.
Bylaws, policy update, first read. So you see, two policies I just previewed over the next month. Policy 1460-3160, 4160, and 5330. All policies, just to, again, to be consistent. It refers to tuberculosis requirements, and adding a new screening procedure, questionnaire to screen up. So I don't know if you have any further questions, but that will be on, that's out there for a first read. And the other policies we have here tonight are...
Anybody else have any questions on these? Okay. Let's move on to bylaws and policies that we are looking for a second read. And these were, a lot of them just were...
Because of that law, or because of the, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Anybody have any questions on these?
We can approve them in one batch. So I'll make a motion to approve the policies and bylaws update that are presented through the second read. Is that clear?
Yeah. Second. Okay, we got a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Motion carries. Non-renewals for purpose of layoffs.
Okay, as we alluded to earlier, just the challenges with budgeting and staffing in our formula, this is probably one of the most difficult things administrators deal with every year, obviously, is we're dealing with people and positions and jobs and, you know, trying to make our formula work. First, we look at enrollment-driven staffing. So we use class-sized ranges for the elementary grades, and we use a formula at the middle school and high school to determine this. So what we have is to maintain our current class sizes, planning to reduce school teachers at Valley View, one at Cormier, and then we had some other partial reductions after several pretty lengthy staffing meetings with all the administrators here. And we have some reductions in special class teachers, but most of those specials, we were able to cover through other transfers, so. We do have one partial reduction that you see there, in a partial layoff, so. So in a process, the administrative team, we look at retirements, we look at resignations, we look at all those things always to avoid layoffs, right? We have retirement at Cormier, for example, so no layoff is needed for that reduction. We're able to transfer two Valley View teachers partly to positions that hold due to a retirement, and that elimination is of some of the current staff overload contracts. So keep in mind, we say this every year, that any of the staff members could be recalled if a percussion, if another position becomes available due to a staff resignation, or due to higher projected... People moving in and demographic changes. Inevitably, every year, there are people that we're laying off, but often, we end up bringing back, because so-and-so's spouse was transferred to a different job, and that teacher has to resign and look for work elsewhere or whatnot. So those things are pretty common for us. We tend to deal with that. So as hard as this is for us, sometimes, other opportunities present themselves, I guess the best way to say that. So state law requires that teacher layoffs are approved by the school board twice, so that's why we bring this forward to you, and we're asking for our budget picture to put in layoffs of Cassandra from her full-time at Pioneer, Nicole, it's a voluntary reduction of a .16, and Patricia is a .08 FTE reduction, that's in music at Cormier and Valley View, and we're recommending these, obviously, for the purpose of layoffs at the question and part of the meeting. So it's, again, to make the whole budget picture work, and it's not something we like to do, but obviously, the biggest part of our budget, and any school budget, obviously, is paying people and staffing and salaries, and therefore, it's always comes into play every year. I have to compliment Keith, leading that discussion. I have to compliment our administrative team, you know, to look at this as a unit, and it's hard, because we're sharing people from building to building and doing everything we can creatively to not lay off people, obviously, to retain people, and some really creative ideas come to the table every time we do this. Two heads are better than one. So that's why our recommendation is out. Any questions?
I think this is probably the smallest FTE I've seen in a long, long time that we've had to put non-renewals on. I think you guys would probably agree, so that's great, that's a great credit to you guys.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-renewals for purpose of layoffs as presented.
Hey, three seconds.
A second motion.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Again, this is an annual request. It's to allow a lot of people over the summer, basically, in a nutshell, to get ready for the next school year. Extended contracts for counselors, to work on preparing kids, all the things that have to be ready for the next school year, kind of in a nutshell. I'll answer questions if you have them, but this is something we take to the annual competition for preparation that necessary. The show must go on, as we're already well into planning for next year and gearing up for another school year.
Does this give them enough time to be prepared, do you think? Honestly, I think there's a lot of... Appropriate time to be prepared. I wish some of them were still here.
Yeah.
A lot of people just left. I know, I know.
I can respond to that, Brian, remembering us adding some days to guidance for scheduling about two or three years ago. That was a conversation that I felt we didn't have. Do you remember that? I'm not hearing that right now. I just think, I know they're appreciative of this, we can continue this. I know this would put an immense amount of pressure on our site principles if this was not in place. It might not even be possible, in some cases, to have some of this ready. Just the amount of work Mary Jo, for example, anticipates all the health needs and have that ready for, we want that, obviously, to be ready for day one for us. So it's a good question, but I'm not hearing people say we need additional at this point, but I think we've talked in the presentations earlier, the needs we have as far as prevention are pretty obvious.
I just have to reiterate, this is, again, something we do every year, to extend and get the things done that really need to get done after the school year is done. So we need a motion for that, too.
I'll move it, I'll move to approve extended contracts.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Board and superintendent communications, anything? No further. Once the Jago are open, Nick?
Friday, June 15th. Yes, absolutely. Information should be going on in the next couple of weeks to the past players and participants, so you should see something in the mail, flyer, brochure. Certainly, a lot of the vendors or a lot of the...
That's not funny, actually.
Okay, future board topics and meetings. There'll be a board workshop scheduled Wednesday, May 9th, at 5:00 at the district office, followed by the regularly scheduled scheduled board meeting Wednesday, May 9th.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.